Are we on for it?
How do I put her on?
She's on. She's just muted herself.
Well, she would respond to Karen though if she heard it.
Mary, can you hear us?
Yeah, she would be doing something.
Maybe not.
Did you just say uh huh?
I think she's not plugged in is what's going on.
Okay.
She's plugging herself in. Unless we need to join audio.
Hi.
Hi, Mary.
Hi.
How are you feeling?
Oh, I'm okay. Yeah, if I don't move.
Yeah. Everyone at home and everyone here. Welcome to the Mashpee Planning Board meeting at Mashpee Town Hall in the Wacoite Meeting Room 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. We're being broadcast live on local channel eight and one ten seventy-two. The meeting will be recorded. We are streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website, which is HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW dot Mashpee MA dot gov backslash channel dash eight asterisk. As Vice Chair of the Planning Board, I'm chairing this meeting for our Chair, Mary Wagon, who's under the weather and is appearing by Zoom. Hi, Mary. So before we commence, let's, if you are willing and able to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are starting this meeting at five thirty tonight to elicit public comment on our draft Local Comprehensive Plan, which is found at HTTP colon backslash backslash WWW Mashpee MA dot gov backslash system backslash file uploads backslash final plan two zero two four oh six two eight zero dot PDF. You can find that on the town website. As you may know, there are nine chapters on the draft LCP. Tonight, we are looking for comment on Chapter One Housing, which Mary Wagon, our Chair, reviewed and redlined, as did our Town Planner, Brian Tobin. We're also looking for comment on Chapter Two, which is Economic Development, which I redlined and commented, as did Brian Tobin. I will take public comment on these two chapters and any other chapters you wish to comment on. I need you to limit your comment to three to five minutes. Before I take public comment, we have a little time here. I want to mention the receipt of extensive written comments from Lynn Barbie, Chair of Human Resources, some comments from Heidi McLaughlin, our Director on Mashpee Council on Aging, as well as some very important comments from Chloe Schaefer, Chief Planner of the Cape Cod Commission, and some comments by email from our wastewater superintendent, Jared Meter. All these comments can be read online. I'm not quite sure about Jared Meter's comments because it came to us in an email, but Mr. Town Planner, can you post that on?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, okay.
If they weren't in this week's meeting packet, it's because they weren't received by the deadline, but they would be placed in the following meeting packet.
Okay, very good. Oh, very good.
They'll all be available online.
Okay, thank you. I see we have somebody in the audience here. It seems like it's Lynn Barbie. Do you care to public comment, Lynn?
Now?
Right now.
Good evening, Lynn Barbie, Surf Drive. I want to thank the Planning Board for having this session where people can make comments and hopefully people will watch this and send in comments. I have been working on the LCP project since it started. I don't know how many people remember. We had these big gatherings. We had them at the school. We had them at the library. Lots of people had a chance to make comments. And I think, you know, that that information is still out there, but we have to make sure that when it gets into the LCP that it's there. I mean, we know that there are a lot of details out there and it's not easy to pull all that stuff together into a final document. I think we've got a decent draft to start with. There are definitely some changes that I would like to see in it. And I did go by in the Planner's Office and get a copy of it and borrow it for a few days to make some comments and to read through some of the sections. But I think most people don't realize how important this document really is. But people recall, people did spend a lot of time giving feedback on that several years ago, and we just have to get our people back engaged in doing that and get this draft completed. And I want to thank the Planning Board and the Town Planner for, you know, really pushing this because it's a very important piece of how this town will function, what we get into this Local Comprehensive Plan. So I want to thank everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to refresh everybody's memory, the nine chapters are housing, economic development, sustainability, natural resources, land use, heritage and preservation, open space and recreation, municipal buildings, facilities and services, and transportation and circulation. Shall we go, shall we start reviewing housing, which is our plan?
Yeah.
Or should we wait a little bit to?
I think we can.
We can do that.
Just begin, and if somebody comes, we can intersperse it with comments.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Mary, Mary Wagon, do you want to lead off on the housing or would you like Brian and you to both do it or how do you want to do that?
I'll start and then Brian can fill in.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Very good. Mary?
So Brian and I went through the housing chapter, the implementation chart.
Right.
For the housing piece and the housing chapter with the fine two code. In general, what we did was we kind of removed things that might exceed the limits put on by our flow neutral bylaw, right? Things that would increase density without any offset or proffers. And we clearly put in that if we want to do some zoning in areas, that we need to make sure it's in compliance with our clean water initiatives and our flow neutral bylaw. So it is a little bit of a challenge. But those were the, those were the biggest changes. There were also some dates that were earmarked for updates because some of this data could be updated. I'll give that to Brian. And then I, those were my big, my two big takeaways. What do you think, Brian?
Yeah, I would generally agree with that assessment. I think, you know, the town certainly very much values affordable housing. We also want to prioritize putting that on sewer to the extent that it's possible. And so our, our housing goals, to the extent that we want to be compliant with the flow neutral bylaw and we want to be proactive in the clean water initiative and we want to balance out, you know, protecting our environment with creating attainable housing. I think a theme that we've intentionally made more express through the red lines is that, you know, affordable housing projects that the town wants to, you know, potentially sponsor or look at seriously or any adjustments that we can make to our zoning code to generate affordable housing should be on sewer, you know, or otherwise continue, or otherwise continue our efforts or contribute to our efforts of protecting our environment.
And then Chair, may I also add that we acknowledge that the Housing Production Plan is updated and that's a big action goal is to make sure that that's implemented. And we, to kind of cross over to our Sustainability Chapter, we talked about, you know, energy efficient and carbon neutral development as well. But I'm sure when we get to the Sustainability Chapter, that can be explored.
Mary, would you like to take this, this section and, you know, sort of flag to us what you think are some really important changes?
Yep. So if we go to I sixteen.
I sixteen?
We introduced the goal H six that ensures new housing developments comply with the town's flow neutral bylaw and state approved clean water plans such as the 2015 Final Recommendation and Initiative Management Plan, ideally with access to private or public wastewater infrastructure or the provision of clean water proffers such as the provision of open space and that should be, or the searing of existing offset housing. So hopefully it's general enough, you know, that goal is, and clear enough that yes, we want new housing development, but we know that we have to make progress in our clean water initiatives. So we need our, our housing initiatives to comply with our clean water plans.
That's a good plan. That's going to be goal H six.
Yeah.
H six, but I would, I would just ask why the word ideally is in there with access to private or public wastewater should be, we're just striking, it's got to be.
Leave, cut the ideally off.
Not ideally, but for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with.
Well, you just want to, there might be something else we're not capturing. Well, I guess, I guess it won't. It's not a bylaw or it's not prohibitive. Okay.
Okay, so we'll delete ideally.
I see, I see Mary's thoughts there.
I do. I see what she's saying.
My point is that it's a goal, right?
Yeah.
So that's what we should shoot for.
Right.
But there may be situations like non-town sponsored forty Bs that come in and aren't necessarily on wastewater. We still want to express to any private developers, though our goals are to be flow neutral bylaw.
How many people here like the word ideally? How many people want to delete it?
I do.
I wanted to just, just strike it.
Okay. Let's strike it. I don't think it's a big point.
No, it's.
But I do understand what you're saying, Mary.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
What, where would you like to go now?
Then Policy H one, we modified just to get away from only looking at commercial strip developments, you know, and being clear that we're looking, we want to look at underutilized or blighted commercial properties.
Where are you on this?
Oh, it's still I sixteen.
Yeah, still right below the.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Yes.
We didn't want to limit it to commercial strip developments. It's just like any underutilized or any blighted commercial property, you know, and look at redevelopment initiatives for that into mixed use or single use in the neighborhoods, you know, with the potential of having different housing types.
And originally it said promote redevelopment of neighborhoods that provide a variety of housing types.
Originally it said promote redevelopment of commercial strip development and underutilized properties.
Oh, of cour-, okay.
Into compact, walkable and pedestrian friendly, mixed use neighborhoods. So it just, it just makes it capture more.
Yeah.
It just makes it capture more. And I think that might have come from a direct comment from the public during the workshops. And this way, it does capture that as well, but it doesn't limit it just to strips.
To, in an exercise of time, if anybody disagrees, please raise your hand and we'll speak up. So if I hear silence, that means you're going for it.
Yeah.
Okay. Next?
And then the next change is Policy H twelve. It's just, it's just a grammatical, you know, regularly audit Mashpee zoning bylaw to ensure that land use regulations do not conflict with patterns of development redevelopment that are designed by the communities.
That's more definitive. That's good.
And that, that was it for our changes for goals and policies. I don't know if anybody else had any recommended changes, where are goals and policies for housing?
I have a question. You talked in the beginning that you want more housing. Long as it was going to be sewn. What about if I own a piece of property that the town says that'll never get sewn? Do I have to still follow the neutral flow? You know, or can I develop it?
Well, so the answer to that question is it depends. If you're coming under regular forty A unquestionably, you will have to follow it. If you're coming under forty B, as in an affordable housing comprehensive permit, you can seek waivers to provisions that are not backed up by state law. Now, much of our flow neutral bylaw is also backed up by state law, so it would be enforceable even though.
We're never going to get sewn. That part of the town's not going to be sewn.
Right, but there are other ways to comply with the flow neutral bylaw through mitigation efforts like land swap arrangements or a cash payment, basically.
Okay, so there's a way I could get by the neutral flow long as I like make a cash payment or give you a piece of property here.
There are, there are ways to be compliant without that specific property being net zero nitrogen input.
Okay.
All right, so let's say you have a, an R five property and you have three bedrooms on it and this R five has an acre and a half. How do you comply with flow neutral if you want to add a fourth or fifth bedroom?
Well, I would, I would typically defer to the BOH and wastewater who are responsible for enforcing it, but my understanding is it's ten, ten thousand square feet of land per bedroom.
Correct. That's what we know. Yeah. So, you know, you'd have to put in an IA if you're in a non-sewored area. Anybody else comment on that? Mary, next?
No, I just think that that's a good question, Dennis, and a lot more work needs to be done in educating the public about the restrictions of the flow neutral bylaw.
Yeah.
Right? Like, it's my understanding that it limits the flow for the town to when our nitrogen management plan was approved. It limits that flow to the zoning that existed in 2015. So it doesn't stop development, right? But, but if you had something that was not really kind of part of our zoning plan at the time of 2015, you might have a problem, such as a large type of forty B.
Only thing I say too, it adds more cost to build the housing and they got all new codes now that add a lot more cost to the housing.
Yes.
And I don't see how you're ever going to get them affordable with all these new regulations and stuff. A average house now is for like four hundred fifty dollars a square foot or even higher. And that's a low end house.
Yes.
You know, so you put all these regulations, the price goes up and people say, I can't live here. You know, I can't afford that house they're building.
It is a real conundrum.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so if we go to page I seventeen and we start to look at our actions. I suggested and Brian agreed to strike Action H one and H two. Those studies typically are used in a community that wants to start to introduce identity zoning and where we really aren't in that position because of our water issues.
Yeah.
We opted that might be, it's not, not the time for that. But we saw in the next one down, which is now the new H one, explore and potentially develop, adopt and implement a form based code townwide or in the form of an overlay district to achieve the development patterns desired by, desired by the community, especially for that infill development and redevelopment of uncommercial properties, underutilized commercial properties. But again, which have, that will utilize public or private wastewater infrastructure and in compliance with the town's flow neutral. That's a lot of work right there.
Yeah.
So that had much more potential than studying how people feel about how buildings look. The next one, H two, this would be a big one for the town. This would be the adoption of inclusionary zoning where if there are X amount of dwelling units created in a development, a certain percentage would have to be affordable.
Mary, won't implementing that, that language there, won't that cause the houses to be more costly again?
You can also.
You're doing SHI and then you're doing regular market rate.
You, right, you have to explore, explore that. So what some communities do is they, for inclusionary zoning, they allow a bonus unit or two to offset that cost, right?
Mm-hmm.
The town of Dennis, they pay for, and the town of Yarmouth, they pay for the affordable housing lottery, which is worth twenty-five thousand dollars or more for that small affordable housing development. So there's things you can, you can offset. It's definitely a process. But it's good because then you can always maintain your percentage in town, right? The next one is change zoning to allow the missing middle housing. And so missing middle housing, it's, it's not the missing income housing. It's the, it's the typology or the type of housing.
Small houses.
Right? Like duplexes, multi-family, that kind of stuff. Is that right, Brian? Do I have that right?
Yes, I believe that's, that was the original intent, so.
I didn't hear you, Brian.
Yes, because it's specifically referring to housing types. So, you know, the theory is that if you have inappropriate areas in towns, an ability to seek things like duplexes or multi-families, the increase in the amount of housing stock itself helps to lower housing prices based on principles of supply and demand.
And then again, we, because that could really be a big change for the zoning in town, we also put in that caveat that it has to be within, you know, our clean water plans.
Yeah, I, I almost wonder if, you know, and I defer to the board, many of the members of whom were here for the public outreach sessions a couple of years ago, but I almost wonder if it would be worthwhile to put a qualifying word at the beginning of that sentence. I'm just noticing this now, Mary, and apologies for not mentioning it in our meeting, but perhaps saying something to the effect of explore changing zoning versus definitively doing it because until we actually study it in detail, we don't know if it's going to be right for the town.
Yeah, let's look at it. And the next one, we've kept the same, which is to fund the Affordable Housing Trust.
And if, if I may, I just wanted to interject on one point before we move on from this page because we did touch on inclusionary zoning and just for the public and of course the board's knowledge, our zoning code, while we don't have like an express inclusionary zoning provision, some of its provisions do have what are effectively an inclusionary zoning component or option. So like under the OSID, you have the option to add affordable units. Under our cluster subdivision development, there is a requirement for a certain amount of affordable units for every ten units. So these, these are other provisions of our zoning code that fall under the, the more broader general understanding of the term inclusionary zoning, though they're not specifically targeted to be as much. They're just options.
Yep. Then H seven we struck because we did update HPP, the Housing Production Plan. Then our new H five is implement the Housing Production Plan, right? So that's good. There was some renumbering until we get down to the new H eleven, which is again. There was some renumbering until we get down to the new H11, which is again, instead of establish the revolving fund for ADU construction, it's examine the establishment of a revolving fund. So those would be like low interest or zero interest loans, people who make ADUs, and they would eventually pay us back. And then they really, they really wasn't much except for numbering, I think, right, Brian, until we get to?
Yeah, numbering and also a little bit of restructuring of the various committees, boards, and departments that would be involved in things, but those are all kind of.
Been housed.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it should, it should be common sense for anybody on the board.
Until we get to I, page I-20, the new H21. So it was the development of the Affordable Housing Standards, we just kind of made that clearer, that that would be architectural standards, site design standards.
What number?
It's on page I-20, it's the very last one.
I-20, 21.
H21, it's on page I-20.
It starts on 19, but then it goes to I-29.
Yeah.
It said development of affordable housing standards for chapter 40B developments, but really if you had inclusionary zoning units, you'd want those standards to be clear. These would include architectural standards, site design standards, and rehabilitation standards. So let's say you had an older dilapidated building that somebody wanted to rehab via chapter, friendly chapter 40B through the local initiative program. You'd really want to have rehabilitation standards set, you know, like you wouldn't want them just to do the outside of the building and leave the inside kind of old, dilapidated. You'd want them to bring all the units, interior and exterior up to a good standard.
Mary, Homeyer Village is, I understand is they're gonna put a new roof on it and new shingles.
Yep.
But can they afford to fix the interior? Because I understand it's not great inside. How do you?
So, so they, they have probably put in with the state, because remember that is property owned by the Mashpee Housing Authority, which is a quasi-state, quasi-town entity, right? So they probably have a capital improvement plan, right? And it's probably on their wish list, but they're probably prioritizing the exterior to make it weather tight.
Yeah.
I think, I've been to some of those meetings, it kind of sounds like they were always working on updating a unit, you know? There's always some work going on, and I think they do it upon vacancy.
Correct.
But they haven't gotten a big like mass development grant like Mashpee Village did, where they did everything all at once. But it's, it's something to think about. The Housing Authority has a public hearing every year as to what, you know, they, they should put in their action plan. It's typically limited by how much they can get from the state. And they do, they have an active application to the community, our Mashpee's Town Committee, the Community Preservation Committee.
Yeah.
And they, they have this in a very scheduled process. So they could, they could, they could come to the town for some money, but the state would probably want to wrap it into their capital improvement plan. There's just no hope of them getting more money from the federal government, so I don't know. But I'm glad, I am glad they came to the town for money. So maybe that's something I can bring to them when they come to us, Karen, regarding their current requests for funds. Okay, that's a good comment. All right, so H22, procure a consultant to assist with community engagement and facilitation of design surets to support the development of architectural and site design standards. So if we get to those affordable housing standards, and it's, we're getting, it's getting difficult figuring out like, you know, what architectural standards should we cite, or design standards should we cite? We might have to hire somebody to help us with that.
You want to say consider procuring? Because it's, you know, it's fact basis. You may not need one, but you think you need one, but you have to make a decision. Consider.
And then this one is my favorite. H23, provide financial and technical assistance to developers of year-round housing. That's that private-public partnership, right?
What you mean it.
And again, complying with our housing standards and our wastewater infrastructure and our flow neutral bylaw. But sometimes that's all it needs, is a local developer coming into town hall going, gee, I have this property, what should we do? And hopefully they may get down to the planning department, Brian, to help them out. And then the next two are kind of the same, and then, oh, this is, this is, this is, H26 is the crossover to the sustainability chapter, design standards and incentives to bring sustainable, carbon-neutral, and energy-efficient housing online, which will usually, and again, use the public or private wastewater infrastructure compliance with the town's flow neutral bylaw. So Dale and Rob, when we get to the sustainability chapter, we just have to make sure I use the right words for that. And then another one of my favorites is H27's development, transfer of development rights zoning bylaw that allows for housing density in exchange for provision of open space or other clean water proffers, right? So this is kind of like, you, you read it later on in the chapter about that open space incentive development bylaw, how we could work on that a little bit more, make it accessible to, to more properties in town, to make sure it complies with our clean water goals. So that's the implementation chart for housing. And I can, we can go to the chapter if you want. Karen, does that sound good?
Sure.
I'm looking through the page, sorry. Is it 1-1?
Yeah, that's one.
Yeah, we just left from capital I, 50, that looks like a one.
Yeah, they do look a lot like.
Chapter one. So we just went through this and kind of updated the dates, and there might be, and I think it's fine for Brian to work on that if we can get some more time with a consultant. You know, if there's any date for the data he feels is a little bit stale, we can, we can.
Update.
There are a lot of dates that are stale, but I didn't think we could do all of them.
20, the 2020 census is okay.
Okay.
2020 census is okay. It's when we start to look at the ACS, the American Community Survey. But I was gonna leave that to Brian. How do you feel about that, Brian? We leave that up to you, which needs to be updated and what can stay.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think obviously if there's newer data out there for say like data that's based on five-year benchmarks as opposed to 10 or 20, and we're at that point being in 2025, and it's already available.
Yeah.
You know, some tweaking there would be appropriate.
Tweak away, Brian.
We'll do, we'll do, Mike.
Our housing market, in the last four or five years, our housing market really hasn't changed much, you know, so. So I think really, let's see. A lot of it, like I'm on page I-13, those charts haven't changed, I-4, it's just, it's just a matter of semantics and verbiage. And Brian did a nice job making it clear. On I-5 on the top, we did talk about non-age restricted housing in the condominiums that Because we have about 30% of our housing stock is multifamily, which is a little higher than other towns on the Cape. And then on I-6, we start to get into, you know, changes to the open space incentive development bylaw. You know, so our zoning, I don't know if you remember this, Dennis, but there used to be, we used to allow subdivisions for multifamily housing.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
And so that's why we have condominiums, multifamily condominiums in town. And that kind, that went away, right? Right, Dennis?
Yes.
It went away, went to single family, and we might want, I think it's in the HPP, to consider the multifamily cluster subdivision again, especially if it gave you more open space. So on page I-6, that's what we're talking about on the top, that really without that OSID bylaw, that's for commercial property around the rotary and chapter 40B, B, there's not a lot of tools in the zoning bylaw to create multifamily housing.
No.
So it's, it's something to think about. Talks about housing affordability, it talks about our market. And then on page 1-9, it talks about we updated all the different housing programs we have.
Mary, on the OSID, you're talking about adjustments. Are you saying since that was really designed for Mashpee Commons, 20 acres, are you talking about lessening, lessening the acreage?
Right, like we, when we first talked about that, maybe about, I don't know, it might have been pre-COVID, that maybe five acres, five to seven acres would trigger the use.
That would be a good bylaw.
Yeah, and there were people that came to that meeting, I remember that meeting in the library years ago, where people stood up and said, I could cobble that together with other people I know in town to do that. And so people would, there was an interest in that. And I think it's because of so many people that have lived here for so long, for generations, right? There's like family property, a little acre here, a couple of acres there, they can cobble that all together and say, okay, this piece is gonna be open space, we're gonna put all the housing over here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, there's some real potential in Mashpee for that. And then 1, 111, that's where we start to get into new construction, right? So we talked about we updated, the first bullet point, we updated about Lakeland Village, it's done, right? We added more details to the 2007 Mashpee Commons chapter 40B, that's the current construction that's happening in that area. There's some mention of the 52 unit of, for Wampanoag Village on Meeting House Road. How, oh, Brian, this should say the Wampanoag, the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe.
Which bullet point are you on? Is that the fourth one?
One, two, three, four, five, I think we took out too many words. It just says the Wampanoag.
Oh, before has, before has procured?
Yeah, it should be the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe. They procured former Plaza del Sol on 130, and that's something, when we send this over to the tribal council, we should asterisk that, make sure we're using all the right words there. Then we talk about the uncommon project eligibility letter. These are all like things we know are coming, that could come down the pipe. That new chapter 40B proposal, how this, this been fund set aside for feasibility study for the lot at 108 Commercial Street. There's also been funding approval for transportation impact analysis for 209 Old Bonns Road. Brian, that might be done. That traffic study might be done.
Yeah, I believe it is.
It is done, I'm pretty sure.
And then I know there was funding approved for the feasibility study of 51 Samson's Road. I don't think that study started.
It actually has started.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's why, I, I think I added that sentence. This feasibility study is nearing completion and looking at two alternatives for affordable housing, single-family compact homes and mixed-use development.
What are you reading, Brian?
At the bottom of page 1-11.
Okay, funding approval.
Last bullet point, last sentence.
Okay.
And on the next page, talks about the planning department, the housing committee applying for funding for a feasibility study for town-only and located operating mills. Then it looks at market rate development, some things that have happened that are focused on age-restricted housing, and we list those there. And we talk about construction constraints, and the big thing that we did was we talked about Mashpee's wastewater initiatives. We talked, we changed the description of the, of the town's protective zoning bylaw, we just changed the words, I don't think we changed the emphasis about anything on that page. On page I-13, I think this is something Brian you wrote. The current town planner is considering these competing interests within the context of the town's land use goals as well as housing goals.
Yes, I, I did add that, I think prior to, I think you added the red lines of the words above hand immediately beforehand, so I believe it still makes sense within the context of the other red lines, but I'm, I'm happy to revisit. I think either way, I did notice as I was doing my review of other sections as well, that some of the housing goals seem to butt heads a little bit with some of the land use goals, which the land use goals were preserving the small town character of Mashpee. So I think there are ways to intelligently explore a healthy balance between the two.
Right, and, and that architectural standards and site design, we gotta ask who we're gonna be involved to do that.
Sure.
Right? You, you hide the fact that it's a multifamily building with superior architecture, you know? Yeah, so this is, and I like how you put in, and have minimal negative impact on the environment. I like how that's.
Oh, yeah.
The bottom line, right?
Yep.
And then the challenges and opportunities, you know, the challenges, we go into it much more with the Housing Production Plan. This just kind of touches on it, that, you know, 30% of our housing stock would only be seasonally, that, you know, we have, we have restrictions on our natural, by our natural environment, but there's some opportunities with the open space incentive development bylaw, a transfer of development rights. And then we talk about, you know, current measures, I don't think we made many changes, we just kind of just, you know, use different words to say the same thing and make it clear. And then once we, that implementation chart, right, that had the goals and policies, we'll get those all matched up, right? We didn't, we didn't redline both the chart and this next section. Lastly, there's a question there about whether we want to include a reference to exploring seasonal community. seasonal community designation under the Affordable Homes Act. I think, Brian, was that something you'd like to talk about?
Well, yeah, or discuss it with the board. I myself am still getting more familiar with some of the requirements for being a seasonal community, although I did recently have a conversation with Reenie Hammond about it. So I think that there is a good, a good shot for Mashpee to be in it. And I know this is also your area of expertise as well, Mary, but yeah, I'm happy to have the board talk about it.
I think we should add that as an action, explore the benefits of securing the seasonal community designation. I've just read a letter by our, I think all of our legislators, all of our state senators and state reps from the Cape, that are recommending that the whole Cape gets that designation. You do have to adopt a few things, such as you have to allow tiny homes, you have to allow some zoning of tiny homes in your community. But I don't, and we already have ADUs, so I don't think that will be a really hard thing to do. Basically, a detached ADU, right? But it does unlock some funding from that Affordable Homes Act, which was the Housing Bond bill that was passed, what, eighteen, twenty-four months ago, which is like billions of dollars for housing. So I think we should definitely explore that sooner than later.
So then we'll put it in as an action up in the first chapter.
Yeah, that implementation.
And then, would it make sense for us to go through the section one point four together as a board, just so we can have a reasonable degree of finalization of this chapter?
Well, one of four, isn't that just the implementation chart? The goals and policies?
Okay, I'm sorry if I misunderstood, I thought you had said that we did not go through the goals and policies. I know I made one small comment on it, but I wasn't sure if you had chosen not to redline it, or if you had looked at it.
Just to be clear, the goals and policies for each of these subjects are both in the implementation chart and at the end of each of the respective chapters.
So this would be redundant.
Yeah. So we'll, yeah, whatever changes we made to the implementation chart for goals and policies for housing, they'll be reiterated here.
I think reiteration is good.
Yeah. We didn't, we didn't redline it in both areas, just to avoid confusion, let alone. So if that's good with you guys, that's housing.
Looks good.
Okay, Karen, I think you're up.
Okay. I'm thinking about the letter from, well, I'll cover that later, I'll cover that after. Okay, so.
Oh, and actually Karen, while you're swapping that page, I just did want to share with the board that some of the red lines that fell under my red lines were an incorporation of Lynn Barbie's comments.
Oh, good.
She submitted some fairly comprehensive comments that were easy to put into the plan as a whole. So I went ahead and just added those in as my red lines. So that, that'll, you'll see that both in the housing and economic development section, and then any other sections she had comments on.
Okay, where, oh, here it is. You know, I would hope that we wouldn't keep printing on the back of things, you know, because economic development starts at the back of one.
Sure.
And I thought I lost it, but here it is.
Sure. I can make a suggestion there, if you want, for your packet, just email Hannah and ask her to a single page print it.
Okay.
I think the rationale behind printing on the back is otherwise you double the size of everybody's packets, but.
Does anybody else mind this, print it on the back?
It would be easier the way you're subscribing.
And also, I'd like it in color.
It's not possible to do that.
Brian?
You have to do double-sided or not double-sided, you know?
I think it would be easier for the board to have it all in red type.
Sure, sure, if that's your preference, definitely.
Well, is it, would you prefer that, to have everything in red, or you don't care?
This is project, yeah.
I don't have a preference, yeah, I'm fine, just the way it is.
All right. I was, I had forgotten how thin the economic development packet was.
Where are you starting, what page are you starting on?
I'm starting on two one, two point one, economic development.
Which is a left-hand, left-hand sheet.
Pardon me?
It's a left-hand sheet.
It's a left-hand sheet, that's why you can't find it. It's right at the end of one.
Madam Acting Chair, if I could make a suggestion, should we start with the goals section in chapter one for economic development, or?
The implementation chart, Karen?
In chapter one, the economic development section of that.
Oh, I, I wasn't doing that.
Well.
I just did this part.
Sure, no, I recall that your red lines were focused primarily on the chapter, but I think I made some slight changes to the goals section.
So that's the beginning of the whole process, right?
Oh, boy.
I, I twenty-two, right?
Yeah.
I think, right?
Yeah, they're very minor and stylistic. When I was going through them, I basically wanted to respect the fact that they were based on public surveys. So most of my red lines are points of clarity, as well as just comments regarding.
Okay, starting at I twenty-two?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think we need to go through them line by line, I'll flip through them quickly now, if one catches my eye as something that's significant, then.
You know what I thought of, Brian, was, do we have a definition of the blue economy in here?
I don't believe we do, no.
I think if we could add that somewhere.
Sure.
While we're on adding kind of a glossary of terms, or, I noticed in my review so far, a lot of acronyms that some go, you know, they're spelled out and then the acronym drops afterwards. But there are several that do not have a spelled out what it is, and there is no glossary that I can find.
So there is a glossary on page one dash fifteen.
One dash fifteen?
Yeah, but if you feel that it needs some improvement, we're certainly open to suggestions.
Oh, yeah, no, this was, this is, this is good, but, I mean, some, I don't have my notes, some, other than the glossary for the LCP, but department, like Planning Department, PD, well, that's in here, but there are other acronyms that are generally understood by the board, but not necessarily the public, although, and I could give you some.
Sure, yeah, yeah, we could, we could look into doing something for like a plan-wide as opposed to the.
Just the.
The implementation table glossary.
I have a definition of the blue economy, would you like me to read it?
Yeah.
The blue economy is economic activity that relies on the ocean and water resources, managed in a way that is environmentally sustainable, socially responsible, and economically productive.
Good, that's fantastic. You know what I like, since that's so important to Mashpee, maybe in the beginning somewhere we can do it as like, almost like a little side.
A box, a box, to highlight it.
Yeah.
Put it in blue.
Yeah.
That's important now.
Yeah. Okay, do you want to write that down?
I did.
You got the whole thing?
Oh, the definition?
Yeah, you do shorthand?
I was hoping you could email that to me. I wrote down that we're going to put it in a box, though.
Okay, I'll write it down. Does anybody want to write it down now?
No, I heard you.
You heard me, but you won't remember it.
Do you have the link that you pulled it from?
I don't need to, I'll be able to read it again when Brian gets through with it.
Karen, if you have the link that you pulled that from, you can just email it.
Okay, I'll do that, first thing in the morning. Okay, so we're on I twenty-two?
Yep. So again, I'm actually not really seeing any, any major changes, they're mostly stylistic. I guess the only one.
I see one on ED three, goal two.
Okay, that's goal two, you said?
Yeah, it's crossed out. Produce and support a stable and adequate local workforce, and attainable housing, and living, education, health, transportation, childcare, and recreation.
Sorry, I'm not, I'm not seeing that crossed out.
You know why? Because it's in black, it's not in red.
Well, you crossed out with education and affordable living.
Yeah.
And then there was an apostrophe, affordable and attainable housing and living, education, health, transportation, childcare, and that's in there.
Yeah, I had just thought that that wording was redundant, so I just crossed out the education and affordable living, because later we say attainable, which is another word for affordable, housing and living, and then education. So otherwise, education would have been a redundancy.
So should that say, produce, this is ED three, right? Produce and support a stable and adequate local workforce with affordable and attainable housing and living, education, health, transportation, childcare.
Yeah, sure, sure, and get rid of the parenthetical?
Get rid of the parentheses.
Oh, I think that's wise.
You know, some of these were taken right from people's events at those workshops and just thrown into the chart. I like these, I mean, I remember when we started the economic development portion of this plan, and we were kind of scratching our heads back then, going, what do we put in there? And I think we came up with some good stuff.
Yeah, I think we can jump right into the chapter if the board's ready to do that. Karen, I'll let you take charge on that, and I'll run back up, or whatever your preference.
Okay, sure.
I know you made two really important changes in there that I thought were great, so I'd let you take the lead, but if you want me to, I'm more than happy to.
Okay, you came up with the suggestion that Rory's shouldn't be the picture on the, because it doesn't exist.
Yes.
You suggested the donut place, and I'm thinking that might be, you know, feeling like we're partial to the donut place, just because we like donuts.
Well, I do like donuts.
I do too, but why don't we just get a real good, beautiful view of Mashpee Commons?
I think that's appropriate as well, and I'm open to either one. I think an aerial view of Mashpee Commons is a great idea. I think the reason why I thought of Duke's Donuts, not to give them any more free advertising, is because they are in many ways a quintessential local business. I mean, they're very much locally owned.
True, true, that's true.
Very popular among the locals. But I think an aerial photo of Mashpee Commons is an exceptional idea as well, and either one works.
What does the board think?
Well, I think that we need to also showcase those other two really big commercial areas, well, four. There's four commercial areas that I see in town, right? So you have Mashpee Commons, you have Self-Tape Plaza with Roach Brothers, right?
Yes.
You have Deer Crossing with all those nice little shops. And then don't forget, oh, one fifty-one, I always call it the Andy's Market Dino's area. And there's a lot of shops in there, a lot of people spend money in there.
Well, then you could do four pictures if you wanted to on that, if you want to.
Or mix them up in the chapter, you know, if you want to have your cover.
Okay, we have a cover here.
The aerial, right, the aerial of Mashpee Commons, I mean, look, it's, it's beautiful.
Well, maybe we should just focus Mashpee Commons, because she's right, we have other.
But throughout the chapter, I think we should have a little bit of Deer Crossing, a little bit of Self-Tape, a little bit of the Andy's Market slash Dino's area, you know? I mean, Andy's Market, Andy's Market is looking pretty good.
Did Bobby Burns start in Mashpee?
Bobby Burns is in Mashpee.
Well, I'm saying, did it start, the first one in Mashpee?
I don't know if it's the same owner, but there's a Bobby Burns up in Jamaica Plain in Boston.
I used to go to that.
Everywhere.
There was another little pub near there that actually had a working fireplace inside it, really like as late as like twenty ten.
This man is like Mephistopheles, he's here, he's there, he's everywhere.
He worked on the Big Dick.
Yeah, the Pope's Alt, I worked on, when the Pope came here.
Oh, that's quite impressive. Well, what are we saying about this, the cover?
Burns.
Do we want to think about it?
If it started in Mashpee.
Think about it and come up at the next meeting, just that one item, what is the cover, what do you recommend the cover to be for economic development?
I think that, I think that works, I think we should decide that we're gonna pull the Rory's picture now, and then I think we should, you know, think about it, like you said, but I think we should also be flexible, because there's, there's kind of limited budgeting, and much of the budgeting, or not much of the budgeting, but a not insignificant dollar value has already gone to photos and airbrushing them. So if there are additional photos that haven't been used yet, it may be wise to choose from those.
Yeah.
Okay, great, I agree with that.
I think that we could have a whole meeting about the photos. I mean, you know, the housing chapter is like waterfront property, it's like, that's the seasonal, that's the seasonal housing. Like, we don't want to showcase that. And there were some, I mean, I'm a member of Christ the King, you know, I'm a parishioner, there was some pictures in there of statues from that campus, I'm like, I don't know, like, you know what I mean, like, I wish I'd known they were spending money on the photos, because we did, we never saw these photos. And I think it just needs to be more representative of the town.
Well, I also agree to the extent that a number of the photos have cloudy skies, and.
I saw that, yes.
I'm kind of a stickler for that, like, I'd like to see like at least a little bit of blue there, you know?
Don't show the weather we're having right now.
Yeah, it's okay if there are some clouds in the sky, but if it's like completely overcast.
Nice cumulus clouds with blue.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good look.
Yeah, as long as there's blue behind it.
One of my comments on photos is that many aerial photos show a, you know, a conglomerate of buildings and things, but you don't, the close-ups show you, you know, these are real things. Sometimes aerial or wide-angle stuff just hides the detail of what you're trying to promote. The maps of Mashpee and other maps of here, I can't read what's on the map, at least at this size. So there's, you got the information there, but it's kind of useless in the size presentation.
Yeah, yeah, and certainly in hard copy form, the good news is that we'll also be allowing, or providing electronic copies where folks can zoom in on the maps. The unfortunate reality of like maps is, you know, like unless you have a large sheet, and if you're trying to include the whole town, that's the way it's going to be, you know? But.
But I think he makes a good point about the capturing the local flavor, and the overhead is.
Hundred percent.
Not as effective in that regard.
Yeah.
We're gonna open up the regular meeting now.
Okay, it's six thirty, and we're now opening the meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board. Do I repeat all this? I guess I do.
I don't, I don't think you have to.
Mary, do I need to repeat the introduction?
It's an agenda.
All right, well, we are streaming live on the Town of Mashpee website, we're broadcasting from channels eight and ten seventy-two, and I'm chairing the meeting tonight because our chair is under the weather, but she is on Zoom. Hi, Mary. All right, the first thing I'm going to go through is the economic development.
Sure, I mean, did you want to take a pause and approve last week's meeting minutes and then jump back into it?
I could do that first. Looking at the minutes of the meeting of eleven nineteen twenty twenty-five, does anybody have any additions or changes to these minutes?
No.
Can we take a vote?
I'll make a summary. I make a bar three, except the minute has written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'm an a as well.
Oh, Mary, aye, and I'm an aye. Okay, so we'll go through the economic development. There aren't that many changes on page two one. This chapter, I don't know what, I forget what that problem was, but it's a capital C. A lack of infrastructure support new investment. Significant investment in wastewater infrastructure is ongoing and will aid economic growth. And this goes through the phases, and this was verified by, um, who, 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 who verified that this language was correct?
So during our, during our meeting, Ashley Fisher.
Ashley Fisher did.
Wastewater Department.
Yeah.
And subsequently, I confirmed it with Jared.
You did. Okay, good.
Wastewater.
So this is the information in a nutshell here about what is going on and what is coming.
I just wanted to take a moment to say that this was Karen Faulkner's ad, and it was fantastic. It really was. It was wonderful. I, I love the way you broke it down and talked about the percentages. It's an important ad.
Now, somebody might argue about the nitrogen at four percent, but that's what the information is that we have.
All right.
You know, so I'm going with.
I can provide you documentation that says it's three point five from GHD.
GHD says it's three point five?
Yeah, I, I got it from the wastewater department.
Okay, we have a conflict here. So do we do anything about, or leave it at four? You know, three and a half, if you round it off, it's four.
But it's, it's not correct. It's three point five. There's other, there's other places in our, in, um, this chapter, like even on page two point three, where you see twenty-one point six percent, fourteen point seven percent, fifteen point one percent. They're not rounded up, they're not rounded down. They actually go up to one point four.
Well.
It should be three point five because that is the accurate number.
Well, if, if the superintendent, wastewater superintendent says four.
I'll send it to you. I got it from him.
You got it from him, three point five?
Yeah.
All right, send it, send it to, uh.
Yeah.
Brian then.
You put it in the packet.
Well, I think on that issue, I'd, I'd just defer to the board.
Acknowledging my public comment and tell me.
Pardon?
I, I, I'm gonna defer to the board on that issue, whether three point five versus four, whichever the board's preference is.
Well, let's see what GHD said.
But thank you for acknowledgement.
Okay.
Oh, I have a question on the first bullet point. An aging population, should we explain just a little bit why that's a concern for the economy?
Well, yes, and I also think I. My apologies to the board, because that is something that I should have wordsmithed a bit. I, I kind, candidly, I find the wording here a little too, um, well, I'll just say blunt. I'll bluntly say I find it to be a little too blunt. I think, uh, starting off by saying Barnstable County residents are getting older, comma, well, instead of getting older, why don't we say are aging? How about that?
That's better.
Yeah.
But is it?
And how about?
Next one, housing costs outpace wages, that's very clear. Is, is the first bullet point about lack of workforce?
Yes, that's what it's about.
At, because it then says, and there is a decline in the number of young adults.
Yeah.
So perhaps.
So you just add they're aging out of the workforce?
Yeah, I think we should.
Let's just say, good.
Put in a sentence after that that references workforce.
Barnstable County residents are aging.
Limited workforce.
Yeah, I, I think Mary's right on that one. Start with that. But that's what we're getting at.
Well, put limited workforce, and then you could say, for example, we have an aging population, or a population that is aging.
Read the sentence as, as you think it should be written.
So we would say, it would start with the, the, the dot, and in bold, say, limited, like a challenge. What's a challenge to a local economy? Limited workforce, period.
Or, or we could even say declining workforce.
Yeah.
Yes.
And you could say, you know, right, our local residents are aging out of, of the workforce, but also our young people are leaving the Cape.
Young people are leaving the Cape because of the lack of.
Housing.
Housing.
Housing and gainful employment.
Gainful employment. Other young people.
All right, I'm crafting something now that I intend to read to the board. If you could just give me a moment.
Okay. Okay, on the next page two.
Actually, may I just take a moment?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, this is what I've crafted, so I'm gonna read it in its entire entirety. Declining workforce, you know, in bold, period. Barnstable County residents are aging, and there is a corresponding decline in the number of young adults, period. Young people are leaving the Cape for a variety of reasons, which among others, which includes, among others, the cost of living and employment opportunities, period.
And affordable housing.
Yeah.
Cost of living.
Housing, I think it comes into cost of living.
Okay. It sounds good.
And groceries down here are expensive too.
But I would say aging out of the workforce.
Uh, where, where would you like to put that?
Um, for the, for the, uh, Barnstable County residents are aging out of the workforce.
I would just leave it as.
Aging, instead of getting older, they're, they're aging out of the workforce.
I like that.
Okay.
Just leave it at, so how would, how would it read now?
Okay. Declining workforce in bold, period. Barnstable County residents are aging out of the workforce, and there's a corresponding decline in the number of young adults. Maybe we can even just delete the second.
Why don't you say, there is a corresponding decline in young adults because?
Well, I don't even think we need that. I think, here, let, let me give this one a shot and then.
Because the rest of the bullet points kind of cover the rest of what that.
So declining workforce, period, in bold. Barnstable County residents are aging out of the workforce, period. Young people are leaving the Cape for a variety of reasons, which include, among others, the cost of living and employment opportunities, period.
And the, the lack of employment opportunities.
Yeah, I mean, thank you. I was thinking more.
I guess at the start.
Employment opportunities that are located elsewhere, but we keep the lack of.
Start the second sentence about the young people additionally, or correspondingly, or something that.
Additionally, I like additionally.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Another thing, a, a problem, the construction. We got people going to folk schools, they can't get a job because people hire, they, they don't verify if the people are legal in this country, and they hire them. And that hurts people that live here, trying to make a living because plenty of times they've been on jobs, and the other company was four thousand dollars cheaper, and then you go, look. And they're not, you know, because I asked, they're not paying them. They're paying like eight dollars an hour and stuff, and you couldn't compete. So I think, I think we have to look at for younger people to stay here, especially in the construction industry or the landscaping. They gotta hire or make sure they verify that people are legally here working, so it don't take away from, they could not just graduate from folk school, that wants to be like an apprentice and stuff. I mean, I have a strong feeling on that, you know, because it does hurt.
We could put that as a different bullet point, Dennis?
I, I, yeah, I'd like to see it there somewhere.
I think it would, it would be more of an action item, um, because these bullet points really more talk about the problem and the existing condition.
Not what you can do, but the problem. But there might be a place to put that in action.
Right, because what we want to do is support our local companies.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
Oh, well.
So the young people who do stay here can work here.
Yeah, there, that, that actually is something that, if you, if you phrase it that way, I think that's something that kind of crosses the border, like such that you could add a sentence to this, uh, to this bullet point that says something to the effect of support of local companies who ensure, you know, employment for, you know, or, or, yeah.
Support or?
That ensure employment for local youth or something. I don't want to be redundant with local.
Kids out of the folk schools.
Yeah. So, yeah.
That's a new action item.
With the youth of Cape Cod, how about that?
Yeah. We can figure it out, you know, I'll think about it tomorrow, let committee.
Yeah, that's, that's your par, your statement, so you, you kind of write it for him. Because you know the problem, but it has to be an action item.
I don't want to make it like racist or something.
No, you can't.
You know, it'll watch out.
No.
You know, it's funny, Dennis, because.
Illegal. I mean, if you're hiring illegal.
But the way this.
It can sound racist.
Yeah, well.
There's no data on it because it's all under the radar.
Yeah.
See, that's.
Well, I, I know it is, you're right, it's under the radar, but it's not so far under the radar that you don't see it every day when landscape companies come out. Good luck with that, Dennis.
Okay, on page two two, Brian put this change in, and I had to think about it, and I finally agreed with him.
By finally, she really means reluctantly now.
Uh, that, as housing and land prices increase, the cost of living and doing business on the Cape becomes unattainable for all but those in the, but all, for all but the highest, it should be those in the highest income brackets.
Well, yeah, so my modification changed it from on the Cape becomes unattainable for all but the highest, uh, for all, I changed, excuse me, let me back up for one quarter.
Yeah.
I changed it from the following. On the Cape becomes unattainable for all but those in the highest income brackets to, this is what I changed it to, on the Cape becomes increasingly challenging for all but the, the highest income brackets.
Yeah.
So I took out unattainable because that makes it sound like it's just not possible.
Never gonna happen.
And I took out those in because it sounded a little too poetic.
Yeah, I like the way that you finished it then.
Okay. Everybody's okay with that?
Are there, is there anything updated, like more up to date in twenty seventeen regional housing?
I didn't, I didn't find it.
We didn't.
That's from the Cape Cod Commission.
Yeah.
The one that's still on their webpage is twenty seventeen, but that's an excellent time. I had the same thought myself, and I was like, what's going on there? And I looked, and that's what I found. But I, I can, we are soliciting feedback from the Cape Cod Commission. So if there's something that's maybe not on their webpage or I wasn't able to find, and, and they say, hey, use this, then absolutely.
On two three, on, um, paragraph two point two point two, Brian looked up at my request, the twenty-four and twenty-five unemployment records for Mashpee and Massachusetts. So you can see, um, it went up a little bit. Unemployment went up. They only had, uh, through twenty-three on the chart here, so we added two more years confirmed through, what was that source you looked up, Brian?
Uh, it was the state webpage.
Yeah, they.
Same data, so it was this, this exact source down here, the.
Yeah.
Labor Market Information, Massachusetts of Department of Economic Research, um, I suppose. Actually, they, they cited twenty twenty, even though they had already gone.
They'd already gone to twenty-five.
Or to twenty-three, and we brought it forward through twenty-five.
Right.
So, yeah, I'm not sure if it's just something that they update in real time and the citation is still twenty twenty. In other words, the data may be, I know our data certainly got pulled from their webpage. Those other two years that were, or, or three years rather, that were already in there.
Yeah.
Probably got pulled from the webpage as well, and it's been possible that the last actual publication was in twenty twenty.
Yeah.
And that's why that's.
Yeah, that's misleading. Page two four, um, the second paragraph, the Mashpee twenty twenty household income. Consider updating that number. Or we should update it, I think. And then in May twenty twenty, the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, the annual average, the average annual wage for Massachusetts was seventy thousand. We should update this, that whole sentence. Those seventy thousand and fifty-seven thousand should be updated, sixty-seven, fifty-seven thousand and change. So actually, who will do that? Do we have enough money from Weston and Sampson to?
Well, minor things like that, I could probably check in to myself, like how we did with the unemployment rate, and if, um, it's not a, if it's not a, you know, quick fix.
Yeah, then you'll give it to them.
Some sort of, you know, source that's, uh, you know, not easily attainable, then I would defer to them because they would likely have easy access to the source because they pulled the numbers from it the first time.
You know what would be really?
BLS data is online.
You know what would be really nice to have? A list of all these different sources, and it tells you what you can, what information you get, because we're not, you know, knowledgeable about these things, and I'm sure there, there, somebody could make us a list.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion.
It would be very valuable.
No, that's a great suggestion. I think, um, I think that's something that we should have.
I think the references could be, the, the, the LCP has like pages and pages of references. I think that could be the base of that list of sources.
Right, um.
They're not, they're, they're referenced like it's a research paper.
Okay, so the, the Bureau of Labor's, U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics.
Right.
So that, that would be the reference for the income, so we'd have to put that in there.
Well, so I haven't made it yet to page two hundred and fifty-four. So do we know where the references section is? Because I see on the table of contents, I see it goes table of contents, table of tables, and then table of figures. Has anybody encountered the references? Mary, did you encounter the references?
I think so, I have to go get it.
We, you, what about two point four?
Uh.
Two four?
Two dash four?
Yeah, what about it?
Um, well, that's the page we were just chatting about.
Yeah, well, what's your issue?
Well, we just were talking about updating the, the data on that, but then we transitioned over to references.
I mean, the data could come from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, so we have, you know, so we just go through the whole, whole LCP and pull out all those sites and put on a line next to it what you can, what information you can get in a couple sentences. So if we have an issue that we really should update, whether it's this or for something else, we have it.
So, um, appendix one, uh, A, appendix A is references.
Oh. Where is that? At the end.
Oh, yeah, there, end.
Yeah, there's ten pages.
Yep. There.
And I know what you're saying, um, Karen, you want those, you want all the references, like the sources, to be listed separately.
Yes.
Not, it's not the date and the page.
Right.
Yeah, it's like an additional thing.
Right.
The other thing is, Brian, um, Cape Cod Commission has like Cape data. They have a, they have a mini department that crunches all these figures too.
Yeah, well, a lot of these numbers come from them, um, and like a lot of the sources don't specifically say Cape Cod Commission on them, but when you look at, like, if you do a search for the title of the source, you find out it's a document that was produced by the Cape Cod Commission.
Okay, um, on page.
We're on two four.
We are.
We're done on two four.
Two five.
Two five at the bottom of the page, land use and zoning. It says only ten percent of the total land is zoned for commercial, two point six for industrial, for commercial, two point six or industrial. I don't know if those numbers are right. Perhaps we should get better numbers from.
Yeah, I put in a comment there to recommend a citation because there is a citation at the end of the paragraph.
Yeah.
Mass GIS, and I just want to confirm, you know, A, A, it says Mass GIS twenty twenty-three, but I, I just want to confirm that one is for the consultant. I want to confirm with them that that's
Mm-hmm.
The citation throughout that paragraph, and, um, you know, that it's still reasonably valid, given the two years have passed. I suspect it is, but.
Um, the next underline is, um, going down the page here. This is exact language. I thought this would be possibly helpful. You know, they might see it and, and like it. The Cape Cod Commission might like the fact that we are supporting this, this statement, this large statement here. What they recommend, a growth policy focused in centers of activity. That's what I was missing in that rough draft I did of the vision statement. I didn't use those words, part, that's part of it. Supported by adequate infrastructure and. Supported by adequate infrastructure and guided away from areas that must be protected for ecological, historical, or other reasons. Development should be responsive to context, allowing for the restoration, should be a comma after that. Preservation and protection of the Cape's unique and finite resources while promoting economic, environmental, and ec- and community resilience. And the next par- next lines are fine. Any issue with that?
No, I thought that was a great suggestion.
Okay. Um, this, this I didn't understand, so I wanted you to explain this, Brian. On the last paragraph on Mashpee Industrial Park, the Commonwealth designated the Mashpee Executive Park as an economic opportunity area for property tax abatement. And you say, you want the citation and the relevance, commercial economic growth of this nature typically correlates to an increase in tax revenue.
Yeah, yeah, so I, my thoughts were first, I would like to see that citation in that, in that source and, and read it in context. And then second is that, you know, usually, um, well, first off, usually, commercial property and, and, and I, on matters of tax, I'm deferring to the assessors and the collectors. Uh, but I, I just will say that usually, commercial property is taxed at a higher rate than residential property. I have noticed in Mashpee that it's kind of a bit of the inverse of that, you know, with the exception of the tax exemption for local residents. Um, but either way, the idea of an abatement on a commercial center and, and focusing on one commercial center in particular, I don't think is necessarily, you know, absent huge public support for it, I don't think it's necessarily something that we want to pinpoint in the plan, um, per se. I mean, at, at the end of the day, we're talking about potential for a negative impact on town, you know, um, revenues, so.
Well, who, who, where would we get this answer?
Oh, well, I, I put that comment in for the consultant. I just want to know where, you know, I want to see that source and I want to ask specifically why it was in there. And I want to see also if it was, uh, directly attributable to a, a public outreach workshop or survey. And if it didn't come from the public, then I think it's something that should, you know, we should seriously look.
Do you know if it came from the public, Mary?
Are you talking about the economic opportunity area designation?
Uh.
Yes, yes.
I'm talking about a tax, a tax abatement specifically targeting the Mashpee Executive Park.
Which is, as an economic opportunity area.
Yeah, so, yeah, so that's a program from the federal government. The economic opportunity areas. And they don't know that they're actually feasible right now, they were available for ten years. Um, and, and I'm not even sure that they were, it was a state designation, I thought it was a federal.
Well, that's, that's why I want to look into the source. I mean, I just want to confirm it, the whole thing in general sounded a little off to me, that's all.
Okay, so.
I'm not su- right, you're right, because I'm not sure that it, it was like a, it was more like a tax credit than a tax abatement. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's different.
Yeah, I mean, an abatement is, uh.
It, it has to go through the.
Is more, is more significant than a tax credit, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I think, I think, uh, and I, and I thought it was economic opportunity zones, not areas, so it's, yeah, that needs to be tightened up. And it might not even be feasible anymore because they were available for a while and now it's like you are, almost have to be in the process of doing that construction now to take, take, uh, advantage of it. The program like has a sunset coming up.
Was it still going when Weston and Sampson wrote this?
I think it was pre-COVID, because it was pre-COVID, because we worked with people. I worked with people that were trying to use the opportunity zones.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it was.
To develop lighted properties on the Cape.
Yeah.
And it was so difficult that they've all kind of gone to chapter forty-B instead.
Yeah, if I, if I recall correctly as well, it was, it was a pretty hot topic in, in Trump's first term, basically.
Right, it came online then, yeah, you're right. So.
The next, next page on John's Pond and Route Twenty-Eight East area. Brian put in, the area has been identified by the planning board as a redevelopment priority area.
Oh, can we go back for a second?
Okay.
On, on the page two, two-dash-six. So Mashpee Commons and Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, Mashpee Commons is actually a hundred-and-eighty acres.
Yep.
Of property, right?
Yes.
Where a portion of it is commercial. And the other portion is residential. I think that, that general description of their property should be in there. Instead of just forty thousand square feet of commercial space and forty-two residential units, it's actually a huge property.
Yeah.
When only, I think, Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, I think only like thirty acres of it has been developed, right?
If that, you know.
Yeah.
They go all, all the way behind us, the church, all the way, they used to go to the high school and then they sold that land.
It's not all commercial, but with its master plan, the residential piece is linked to its commercial. So it might be something that you give a call to Tom Ferrante for just a very brief, you know, description of the total acreage that they own.
What part, what percentage or what number of acres are commercial? What number of.
What number is residential?
And what percentage is left to develop?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great idea, I'll definitely do that. I've actually already initiated a little bit of dialogue with Mr. Ferrante regarding details of the Mashpee Commons Plan, uh, or, or, uh, you know, comprehensive permit history and the special permits that predated that. And that reminds me of another point, um, in, not to jump around too much, but in the housing section, that detailed analysis, um, of the phases of the commons and the breakdown there. I, I pulled that from the plans themselves, but I did, uh, uh, get some additional feedback from Tom Ferrante since then. So I just want to make the board aware that I may, may tweak that slightly as well. I just haven't had a chance to look at, uh, his additional feedback, so.
And you see how these other major commercial areas kind of have a description of where they are in town, right? They do connect that to Mashpee Commons too, that it's the area near the rotary in between Route Twenty-Eight and One-Fifty-One. Continuing over into Great Neck Road, south, however you want to generally, um, describe it with our major intersections and roads.
Yeah, that's another good idea, you know, obviously pending board approval. I, I think it wouldn't hurt to beef up that paragraph a little bit, especially given its central location.
Good. Can we move on? To two, two-seven. Repeating what I said, the par- planning board is added to John's Pond area and Route Twenty-Eight East area.
Right.
And you want a citation there?
Yeah, so, uh, there, there were two instances on this page where I was hoping to find a citation because it said that the planning board did this specifically, so I would just like to see what meeting that that was voted on and then insert the date. You know, so like, for example, it might say something like, the planning board at its meeting on, you know, March, and I'm obviously just throwing a random date out here as an example, March sixth, twenty-twenty-two, X, Y, Z.
So Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we did talk about this years ago. As areas that were ripe for some redevelopment.
Yep.
And when the former pla- town planner Evan Laird first started working, he, he introduced new zoning along Route One-Thirty that allowed more uses in that area.
Yep.
So that area was like, check, that's been done. But John's Pond and the Route Twenty-Eight East area, we never got to. We never got to. So, so Brian, yeah, I, I re- I recollect and Rob, maybe, I think you were on the board too. I rec- I recollect some discussion about that, but I don't think there was ever a formal vote or an action plan or anything like that. It was like just a general, I remember discussing it. So.
We discussed.
If we, mm-hmm.
We discussed One-Fifty-One across from Dino's where that restaurant is. That used to be a lumberyard behind it, there's a lot of, that we talked about, maybe see if we could redevelop that into some housing and stuff.
So perhaps rather than going back and trying to find a needle in the haystack at what meeting those were years ago, instead of has been identified, we can just say, uh, this area has been discussed.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, by the planning board as a redevelopment priority area.
To look into.
Yeah, that could encourage, instead of in hopes to, that could.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll just reuse that wording in the next paragraph as well.
Discuss, yeah.
For the Route Twenty-Eight, all right.
And I, and I still feel those areas have some potential.
Oh, you too.
Sure.
A hundred percent, it's just when you say something like identify, it seems like there was probably.
Yeah.
A board vote.
It was determined.
That there is an overall plan.
All right, yeah.
Where you're identifying these plans in it. And I just don't want to leave folks with the wrong impression there and then somebody goes and looks for the redevelopment priority area plan and it's not existent.
You can blame it on me.
Dennis handwrote it.
Yeah.
On a page two-eight, I don't know why I thought that the town had hired a full-time grant writer.
I thought we did have the town.
Apparently not. Now, the tribe has a full-time grant writer, right? And it's paid off for the tribe, hasn't it?
Yes. How'd you guys do that?
What's that?
So how'd you know that?
Well, I just know that, you know, the tribe gets grants.
We, we did discuss this, didn't we, Brian, you and I? About who, and it was, right now, it's.
I thought we voted that.
Yeah, so we have a grants coordinator, Ashley Fisher wears that as a second hat.
That's a second hat, but she doesn't write the grants, is my understanding.
No, no, it, it is dispersed, I believe, among the departments. When a department's interested in a grant, they would then pursue it on their own initiative, is my understanding.
It seems a little.
But don't you need certain skills to be a grant writer? That you wouldn't necessarily have as a department head?
I don't know, how, we can't have anybody on that full-time, there's a lot of money out there.
Sure.
Floating around.
No, a hundred percent.
And it's got to be identified and brought to people's attention.
Hundred percent, and it's, um, something that could conceivably pay for itself if they bring in.
Oh, yeah.
Sufficient grant funding and then also function in the role as.
Could pay for the, his or her job.
Right.
Completely.
I mean, Ashley's doing plenty of stuff with, regarding water and other plans. And that's a big job, especially when you consider what we just went through with the Mashpee Wakeby Pond and we've got other issues in, in the bay. And it's just seems to me that somehow we should, somebody should be in charge of that.
Sure, so I, here, here are my thoughts there then, if there's sufficient board consensus for the idea, I would recommend putting it in as, um, a, a mid-to-long-term goal and do it, uh, in the format of, ex- like using qualifying wording like explore or recommend.
I wouldn't do that at all.
Well.
I would say, let's get on this.
I, I, that's what I want to do.
Well, I. I do agree with everybody about that and I agree with it being a priority. Here's the only reason why I'm suggesting it, and I'm going to defer to the board at, at the end of the day, but I just want to make these thoughts known. There's a process for onboarding staffing, um, and, uh, you know, that flows through town manager's office and town meeting. So it's kind of, it's their lane, uh, FinCom, town manager, town meeting, that, that's, that's their world. So we can certainly recommend it, we can encourage it, but at the end of the day, final approval is going to come through processes that are outside the planning board. So I just want to float that concept out there and, um, you know, I'm happy to incorporate whatever changes the board recommends.
Well, I'm thinking of it as a, like a legal argument, if I were writing a memorandum of law, I would put all the positives in it based on facts that we have, that we may have. I mean, for example, I don't know, this is confidential information, I guess, what, well, you, well, we know, do we know what, would, would your tribe tell us what grants you've gotten through the grant writer in the last three years?
I don't know.
I mean, is that, I mean, because we don't have to know what her salary is or his salary is, but she makes X a year and she accomplished getting these grants written for four-hundred thousand or whatever.
Well, at the very least, without even asking the tribe, we should know what grants the town has received over the last five years. And list those and see what we're missing in order to advance this cause. Does that make any sense? I mean, we've got to know that.
There must be a website to say what grants are out there from the state, right?
Oh, yeah, plenty of grants out there.
I mean, there's plenty of grants and.
Sure, I, I think, I think in terms of adjustments to the plan, that might be going down a rabbit trail. I think that we've identified it as a concern and I think we should certainly, as Mr. Milbury is suggesting, put it in as a goal and, and come up with, um, you know, the appropriate wording for that. I'm, I'm not sure though that we want to list all town grants in the economic development section if it's just.
No, no, we would, no, oh, no.
I guess.
No, it's just to, to justify why we should have a grant writer, a full-time grant writer. I don't know what a grant writer makes as a salary.
Well, they.
I, I think we should mention it in the executive summary.
Not here, well, can't we mention it here and the executive?
You can, I think.
It is, it, it is mentioned here, so the question is, how do we, or at least what I, what I'm hearing the board's question is, how do we incorporate it in as a goal? But it is, I mean, it says right here.
Okay, we have it here.
Ashley faces an ongoing challenge of identifying funding options to support local government programs, period. The town lacks a grant writer, comma, which makes securing funding for various projects more difficult, period. Again, this is kind of strong wording that I, 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 we all might consider tweaking, but then Karen added, the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe does employ a full-time grant writer, period. And then the blacking continues, I won't read everything, uh.
Do we have that in the implementation chart?
Well, that's the question, that's, that's the question I'm hearing from the board, is, is it sufficiently listed as goals and, and, and action items? So that's the question I'm hearing from the board and that's, that's a board decision.
Where are you exactly reading from, Brian?
Uh, I was reading from section two-point-three-point-one on page two-dash-eight. Challenges, first two sentences, three, first three sentences if you include, uh, Ms. Faulkner's red lines.
So under housing, we need an action, action step, you know, to hire, step, right? So, yeah, I think we should put that under, um, economic development, action.
Okay.
That we explore a, a townwide grant writer that would work on economic development grants.
Great, so I'm.
A full-time, how about a full-time grant writer?
And are we recommending that, that's in the planning department or where are we recommending?
That's, I think you should put that in economic development, I think you're going to see a need for that under the sustainability chapter.
Sure, 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 no, I'm, I'm going to add it as ED action item nine. Explore grant writer, you know, obviously that's shorthand.
Full-time grant writers.
F.T.
May I suggest, uh, along those lines, uh, and I do know in previous, uh, areas where I have lived, I had neighbors that were husband and wife grant researchers and writers. And you don't write a grant if you don't know what's out there. So you need somebody that has research of grants, you know, public domain, uh.
Knows where to go.
Scholarships for kids going to college, there are tons of them and nobody applies for them because they don't know they're out there. The grant writers that, uh, I know personally, uh, do very well and they are broad, you know, um, whoever wants to hire them, they research a, a whole line of, uh, grants that are available, see which ones are applicable and then they write and, but.
And they have to be a good writer because there's a way to say it.
Oh, yeah.
That gets the attention of the people.
But I didn't want you to leave out the research and writing of the grant. But I didn't want you to leave out the research and writing of the grant.
An excellent point, Rob. So here's how I've worded it based on those comments and please let me know, board, if you approve. So under action items, ED nine, explore the employment of a full-time grant researcher and writer.
That works.
Yahoo!
Sounds good.
Well done, Brian.
Thank you, Sarah. Well, thank you, board.
Good.
Well done, board for the suggestion.
It's great. Okay, so, uh, it's mentioning here, now I'm looking at it again, the blue economy. Now, would you think it proper to put-
We're back on page 2-8.
2, 2, uh, 2-8 below the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. The town has also seen a decline in its traditional blue economy, blah, blah, blah. We could do a blue box down here and put that definition of blue economy.
I like the idea that the box is in blue, too.
In, in this section-
With the background blue.
Maybe we could do like little ocean waves or something.
Yeah, yeah, a little shark.
That's another $300.
I have a suggestion.
Yes.
Comment. Um, in this section, instead of saying the part about the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe employs a, a grant writer, could we find a, a statistic that spells out like the success rate of municipalities that do employ-
Yeah.
-grant writers and say, uh, if we can find one that says like, you know, towns that employ grant writers and researchers have a, so such and such success rate.
How can we do that?
Yeah, that's the question.
Well, we certainly can find out which towns employ a grant.
Yeah, I mean, it, it should be a job function.
If we called each town manager, we could know who has, we might be one of the few that don't have.
Might be, might.
Does Falmouth have a full-time-
Not that I'm aware of.
Falmouth does it, but I think Barnstable does.
I think it might be a tad more common in cities and if you all recall, Barnstable technically is a city, it's the city known as the town of Barnstable, so.
But that, that has come up in One Cape over the years, that people came up and said, yeah, under this grant and this town is, wrote, wrote grants and they have a full-time grant writer. And so there were Cape Cod towns that employ, and I don't know which ones.
Well, we can, uh, we can look into it and if there's a, a relevant statistic or, or data point, we'll incorporate it. Uh, and if not, it's something that we can just make a larger project, you know, because it would be-
Who is your grant writer in the tribe?
Um, her name is Kim, I know she's-
Kim, you don't know her last name?
I can't say it. I, I don't know how to say it, pronounce it.
Is she listed on the website?
She might be, I'm not sure.
Mm-hmm.
Well, Karen, you and I also discussed the idea of, you know, after, you know, this is obviously separate and apart from finalizing the LCP, which is what we're focusing on this evening, um, at some point in time, potentially approaching the tribe and sitting down with her and getting a sense of what she's, what she does and, and-
Yeah, I would really like to do that because I, I, this has been something that I've wanted for years here.
Yeah. I know, I mean, for us, for our, for our department, she, we work closely with her. We, we have a lot of data, information pertinent to the department or, you know, our, our environment around us and she, you know, she collects that information and she does a lot of the heavy writing. So, you know, she plugs in, she plugs in a lot of information.
And what, what, do you know what her background was before she came here?
I don't know. Nope.
I mean, it's a certain kind of education that you have. You have to be a good researcher, a good writer.
Right.
And you have to, you have to know these sites, you know? I mean, you just-
So I'm, based, based on the temperature of the board, I'm going to go ahead and, and under that ED nine, I'm going to change the word explore to pursue.
Okay.
Uh, if, um, when we're soliciting feedback from the select board, if they feel strongly opposed to the word pursue, we can tick it back down a notch to explore. But we'll put it in as pursue.
Okay. So we do the box, the definition of the blue box for definition of blue economy?
Yeah, I like that.
Okay. And that's it.
Little shark, Brian, maybe an oyster.
Chucked or unchucked?
Yeah.
Actually, instead of a box, why don't we do an oyster, like an open oyster? And we just put the definition-
With a pearl in there?
Yeah. A blue pearl.
A blue pearl. Why not be fun, fun about it? Okay, so now, um, let's move on.
So what's our next two chapters that we're going to do?
Okay, uh, I'd like to have, uh, what are the next two chapters would be-
Well, I think we need to tackle more than two chapters because, I mean, I thought-
Could I interject something about this? I, I really am concerned about how we can possibly get this on the May meeting.
No, I don't think we can.
Okay, let me just tell you my arguments for that. We can't do this next December 17th.
Right.
Because of Trader Joe's. We, our next meeting would be January-
Third.
Third, okay. February, what is, what is the date?
February 11th.
February 11th is the date and we have to submit it, but between, between now and then, we have to finalize this thing, we have to send it to the Cape Cod Commission.
Do public comment.
Do public comment.
And now we want to send it to the tribal council.
Tribal council, you know, and it's going to sit on somebody's desk for a while and then it goes to the selectmen, select board.
And then comes back to a public hearing for the board, then goes to, you know, then goes in a warrant article, then goes to town meeting.
So basically, we have one month to do the whole thing.
Exactly.
Well, I defer to the board. I mean, if, if it's too aggressive, um-
Let me just add one more thing. Chloe, uh, what, I can remember her last name, from Cape Cod Commission.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, she's added a lot of things. Uh, Lynn has added a lot of things. I don't know how many of those things you put into the economic.
Well, Lynn's I've put in, Chloe Schaefer's I haven't put in yet. I sent them to the board so that we could work together to put them in, but, uh, the important thing to note about that is that, uh, the Cape Cod Commission would still like to look at it again after those are put in.
All right.
Oh, again, so all this has to be accomplished basically in January.
It's never going to happen.
And we have to go through, I mean, how many are we, how many, uh, chapters are we going to do in, on January 3rd? Sustainability, natural resources, and land use? Was that what the plan was?
Well, so Karen, I talked to Brian a little bit about, you know, this. And we could, we could start at 5:30 on December 17th. That's one thing we could do and do two chapters. Or we could add dates, meeting dates, special just for this. If you don't want to and you want to keep to our first and third Wednesday, you're correct, we won't make that deadline. If we want to make the deadline, I think it's possible, but we would have to add, add extra meeting hours and possibly meeting dates.
Well, why don't you outline what you think that the, the schedule could be?
I think we could do sustainability and natural resources at our next meeting if we started at 5:30. And did what, like we did here, we just get prepared and we go for it.
Oh, wait, we have public comment again. What if, what if people, you know-
I wasn't going to do public comment again. I was just going to do those chapter two, chapter four on the 17th, starting at 5:30.
Go on, continue, tell, what's, what's the next?
Right. And then, and then, I, I, I don't know what you're, you're, how, I mean, I'm available to have meetings, you know, in addition to our first and third Wednesday. I don't know if you guys are, um, did try that before, wasn't that popular?
Well, I think that if we're going to explore, um, increasing board time on this, you know, and, and board bandwidth, I, I would recommend additional meetings over an earlier start for our December 17th meeting. And the reason for that is because we're looking at the Trader Joe's application, which we all know is a very important application with a lot of materials and is very comprehensive. And our hopes are to have the civil engineering peer review in advance for that. So it's going to be a very technical meeting, uh, as well as a top spinway subdivision application, which also, uh, is likely to be, prove technical as well because we are getting very comprehensive, um, recommendations from the Board of Health. I've been working with Mr. Seaberry very closely on that. So I would recommend, if the board wants to continue with the aggressive deadline, uh, doing additional meetings, not, not doubling down on that meeting. The, the workload is going to be, um, exhaustive on the 17th. Folks are really going to have to review a lot of materials for them.
So, um, what's, we, we could, like we've done before, is go to the, um, go to the library, um, and get meeting space there. It's accessible, it's public, we can bring the tables together, we can have the public in the room. Um, and good dates over there are usually like Saturdays and Thursday evenings. So I don't know if you're, what's everybody's availability? I don't know if we want to let Hannah and Brian poll us on that offline.
Well, like I said at the beginning, I didn't think we had enough time to be on the, the May town meeting. And I don't know why we're rushing this. I mean, it's been 10 years since we did something. Let's bring it to the October meeting and make sure we get it right. Because we, even after all the meetings we have, still going to go to the Cape Cod Commission. They could take two or three weeks. February is caught. We wouldn't be able to submit it.
Even if we had the extra meetings?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're just talking January, I mean, December's over unless we have extra meetings, but January, we have two meetings, even if we had extra meetings, we, after we do them, we still going to send it to the Cape Cod Commission. And it could be the end of January when we send it and they may sit on it for two or three weeks. And then they're going to all the select board to get approval to be on the warrant. I don't, I think we're beating ourselves on the head with this.
We don't want to rush it. And there's no expiration date on this thing.
No.
On the, on your town's plan.
No. We don't know what the changes the Cape Cod Commission, they could have sent back to us with the changes we made.
Now, what was what you said after we make, oh, after we make the changes?
So even, even though they're still going to-
They're still, I think it's still a good idea to have them review it again. And I did talk to Chloe and she did recommend that as well.
So two reviews?
Do we have to? Well, we don't have to, but it, we certainly want to avoid the situation where we go to a town meeting vote and there's still something that they don't like.
Yeah.
Um, because we don't want to go through a town meeting vote and then send it to them and then they kick it back and then we have to go to another town meeting vote later. That would be, that would just not be good. It would extend the process, you know, and significantly so because you have to wait for another town meeting, so.
I think we should proceed the way we're going. I mean, look how much time we've spent already on this and we're only two chapters.
Yeah.
Why don't we just continue to do this when we can at 5:30 or whatever, you know, Mary thinks we should do, you know, on a regular basis so that, like, say, maybe in March, we're ready to submit it to the Cape Cod Commission for review? And we'll be, we'll be good. We won't feel this pressure. I feel, I feel a lot of pressure about this because-
Well, I, I defer to the board. I mean, I, I like the idea of at a minimum, continuing to keep an aggressive schedule, you know?
Keep going as if, as if we-
Mary, you really keen on a quick resolution to this. Is there a reason why or just, just wanted to get it off our plates or?
Um, so we were gonna, we were originally going to focus on the open space and rent plan, right? But the Cape Cod Commission changed its regulations, right, member? And, um, we can't be a party to a development agreement without a certified LCP. So, but if we can't make the May town meeting, we'll do it in October.
Well, it looks like to me the only way, if we wanted to continue down the hurried path, um, we'd have to do extra meetings.
Right, we would, we would have to start meeting Saturdays and Thursdays. I mean, we couldn't do it. We can do it, it's a slow time here on the Cape. If it was August, I'd be like, get out of here. But, um, it is like the slow time on the Cape. So it's, it's up to you guys. It sounds like you guys want to keep to our first and third Wednesday of the month's schedule and start at 5:30 to give us a good solid hour at the beginning of our meeting for this. The, the problem with like having it after a public hearing, you're exhausted, you're exhausted, you know? So, right, on December 17th, there's too much on the agenda to even put this on the agenda. I, I agree with you, but possibly in our January meeting that we start at 5:30. So we get, we get a good solid hour on this before our normal business starts.
Mary, uh, instead of starting at 5:30, why don't we just plan another day that we could spend two or three hours on it? We don't have to, you know, like a regular planable meeting on a Tuesday or a Thursday.
With less on the, on the agenda.
That's what she's suggesting, that's one of the things she's suggesting.
At the library.
Yeah, at the li- at the library, but at least we get more time.
So if we're, if we're moving with the two chapters per meeting approach, then you're looking at like four to five extra meetings or a combination of extra meetings and early starts.
Well, we've already done two chapters.
Yeah.
We got two chapters of meeting.
Yeah.
And transportation, as you pointed out, might be-
It's a big one.
A little, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of changes that were recommended.
So.
And I will just, and I share this just as a data point, I'm not, I don't want to influence the board one way or, or the other, but, uh, one of the comments in the Cape Cod Commission was about a, uh, capital facilities plan, which I believe at this stage is non-existent. So until I get a better handle on that, I do have somewhat of an objective fear there that this is a bit of a granite boulder, which, if you all recall in the beginning, they used kind of a construction analogy about this, or perhaps that was in front of the select board. But I said, when, you know, when you have, uh, an aggressive schedule like in, on a construction project, um, sometimes you run into, uh, unforeseen circumstances like a large granite boulder when you're excavating. Uh, I need to get a bit of a better handle on the requirements for a capital facilities plan. Uh, they are spelled out in the Cape Cod Commission's regulations for local comprehensive plans. Uh, there are at least four, technically there are five sub-bullet points of the requirements for a capital facilities plan. Um, but the fifth one, uh, is negligible because it's, uh, it requires being, um, uh, it, it requires being or integrating and or referencing the regional capital facilities plan, which at, at present is non-existent, the current RPP, uh, for the Cape Cod Commission.
So Brian, I, I would refer you to the, the Truro LCP and the Sandwich LCP.
Yeah, the Sandwich one looks pretty good, yep.
Yeah, they weren't that thick. Ours is much-
No, they're four or five pages. Yeah, no, it's not, it's not the thick, no, a hundred percent, it's not the thickness I'm worried about, it's the inform, it's the compiling the appropriate information that I'm more worried about. Because, no, they're not thick, it's a lot of information to gather, that's all. Like, they're only like four to five pages in terms of like written text, but.
So let's not rush it.
So I just, I just don't know how lo- no, no, I'm, again, I'm not saying this to sway the board one way or another, I just, I honestly have no idea how long it's going to take to compile that information.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we, um, start early in our first meeting in January and try to pull together a Saturday meeting in January at the library?
I'd probably do that.
I mean, that gives everybody plenty of time to look at what they, their chapters.
Yeah.
And then see where we're at.
Trader Joe's, right? It's going to come back to us again in January, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to do traffic in January.
Maybe not the first Wednesday in January. Uh, oh, the, the first Wednesday, right. But maybe if we could get this on our agenda for the first, for the first and third Wednesday in January, plus a Saturday meeting in January of, like, three hours, we could make a lot of progress.
Yeah. And then, and then reassess there. I mean, again, I defer to the Board, but, let me defer to the Board. But I think that's a reasonable approach as well, reassessing then. But it, that's up to the Board, if the Board wants to do the extra meetings, that's all.
Do you, does anyone have any knowledge about how long it takes for the Cape, typically for the Cape? Because I'm reading here on page I-5, 1-5. "After adopting the plan on February 18, 1998, the planning board forwarded to the Cape Cod Commission, which preliminary reviewed it for consistency with the provision of the county's regional policy plan. The Commission's draft preliminary consistency review was received by the Board as of April 1, 1998. Public meeting, at which the Board was able to discuss many of the Commission's comments with members of its review committee. The Board reviewed the Commission's concerns as well as comments received from other parties, and suggested consistency language amendments provided by the Town Planner, and held a public hearing on April 15, 1998, to decide on any amendments required to bring the plan into consistency with the RPP. This plan that is summarized here includes the amendments made on that date, and is the document approved at the May 4th." Okay, it was approved at May 4th. It's not telling me how long it's going to take to review, the Cape Cod Commission to review this, and they have a second review? Plus, you've got the Finance Committee-
They've already read it. The Cape Cod Commission has already read it once. So, we're going to give them a redlined version, right? So-
You think that's, that's all they'll read, the redlined version?
Oh.
Yeah, I think-
Will it be the same person?
I mean, it's not like us. They're not meeting, they're not volunteers. They're professionals. They work, you know, 40 hours a week. So, I don't think that's going to be the longest part.
So, a couple, well, a couple of comments and thoughts there. I did talk to Chloe Schaefer, and she said if they have a date that they can anticipate, she's, this is my phrase, but it's the sense that I got cautiously optimistic that they could get, like, a two to three week turnaround.
Two or three week turnaround?
Um, the thing, the other factors you want to include there are tribal, tribal council, and then-
That's right.
And then here's, here's, here's the question that I actually had for the Board. So, we have officially opened the public comment period, although we didn't, like, announce it with a set end date. Like, do we want to pick an end date as well? Or, I mean?
Well, we asked for comments from the Select Board by when?
Um, I think-
End of this month?
Yeah, end of, end of December. And I know at least one Select Board member said she'd have her comments to us this week, by the 15th.
Sent it out to department heads?
Yep.
We've sent it out to the chairs of all the committees.
But do all these people know what the RPP says, and they have to follow?
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure many, oh, let me put it this way. For the Select Board, a lot of them probably do, because a lot of them have county connections, right? Or somehow are involved in the county.
So, after, so, so after we get the comments from the Select Board, give plenty of time for all those other committees to be notified of it, to make sure the departments had had been, and had time. And then we do our first review, right? Right? Which might take until sometime in February. I think that's when that goes out as a formal document for public comment, including it being sent to the Tribal Council for consideration.
So.
Like, I, I think we should send it to the Tribal Council until we've read it again all together, like, as a Board, and we've got the Select Board's input, all the department heads' input, and make sure that the other Boards and Committees know about it. So, that would be like mid, mid February, going out formally for a 30-day comment period, plus a formal invitation from the Tribal Council.
So, we missed the February 11th to submit a petition.
Well, you, right, you can put, you're right. I don't want to, I, I still think we could do it, because you could just put in a placeholder. But if you think it's too rushed, let's not do it. Let's, that's okay.
Too rushed.
And if we send it to an entity like the Cape Cod Commission, or the Tribal Council, and they need, they say, "We're really interested in this. We need more time." There's no reason why we can't give people more time. Um.
Could I, could I recommend, because I'm hearing, I am hearing, like, significant amount of back and forth. Could I recommend that we just take a vote? We have the Board vote on it?
Yeah, that's what I just said.
Oh, okay, great.
Okay, we take a vote. Who would like to make a motion?
I, this is one of my motions. My motion is that we bring this back to our public agenda for the first and third Wednesday of January, plus an additional Saturday meeting in January, with the goal of finishing our Board review, plus all the comments that come in by mid-February, for a commencement of a public comment period and distribution to the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribal Council, and any other regional entity.
And add to what, what town meeting we're putting it on?
Um, I think that, that I'd like that to be my motion right now. I, I don't think we need a motion to put it on town, you know? And that's my motion right now. Somebody else wants to amend it, go right ahead. That's my motion. Start doing this on Zoom.
So.
So.
So, your motion, though, Mary, don't really accomplish anything, because we're not-
We're, we're all agreeing to do this. Two meetings, regular meetings, and a Saturday three-hour deal.
It's not accomplished to get on the Maytown meeting.
Yeah.
The way Mary said it. I make a motion, we just continue this.
We have to address Mary's motion.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Well, nobody seconds it. It's dead.
I said nobody seconded it.
I'll, I'll second what she's saying thus far. All those in favor?
No.
Jan, two meetings, regular meetings in January, and a three-hour Saturday workshop?
No, no.
No? Who said no? No?
Dale.
You said no?
I say aye.
Oh, aye.
It's up to you now.
I'll say aye. But the game is not over yet.
It passes then.
You say what?
It passes. Mary's motion passes.
Yeah, Mary's passes. Yes, it does. Now, the next one is, should a motion to work as expeditionally and carefully as possible, but not necessarily make the, come on.
Well, I know where you're going with that, but why don't we just say-
That's what Mary's motion already said.
That's what Mary's, no, it's just, I don't think we have to make any more motions. We just go, like we said, we have a Saturday meeting.
Okay, well, I think-
All we're doing is adding another meeting.
I, I think we're all agreeing, we're not going to make the February. See, that, the thing about a placeholder, Mary, I don't really understand that. I mean, I know what it is, but-
So, you, so, the, 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 the town asks for your-
Article.
Warrant articles.
Yeah.
By a certain date. So, they get to work with them for the warrant, right? But we have put a placeholder in before, saying, "We're working on this huge bylaw. We're almost ready, but we don't have the specific verbiage in a few spots. Give us a couple more weeks." And you submit that in memo, and they say, "Yeah, we'll do a placeholder."
Okay, a couple more weeks. Are we talking about April? What, what is the date for that?
So, that's something that somebody needs to go into the Town Manager's Office and work it backwards. I mean, we're very close to it, but if we're not comfortable rushing it, I think that if we, if we do the January meetings, plus a Saturday meeting, then we get it out to the public, you know, that's huge. That guarantees we're going to be in October. What I'm afraid of is we'll do what we've done in the past, or what's happened to people in the past, and you go, "Oh, I have until October." And all of a sudden, it's the July deadline for the warrant.
Well, we're not going to do that. We have a recognition that we have to work, we just keep working as if we're going to May, but we may not go to May.
Right.
But I don't want to be personally pressured.
I think we can, I, I still think we can do it.
Give you a backup, Karen. How's that?
What about a Manny Fenny?
Can make recommendations, but I can't do it myself.
We did a lot of surveys. We did a lot of workshops. I think this document really captures the feelings of this town. I think we're going to put it out for public comment, and we're not going to see a lot of controversy on it. You know what I mean?
Well, we certainly didn't see much tonight.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I, I fully respect that approach. One thing I want to talk out a little further is the public comment. Like, I, I mean, we have a June 2024 draft that was near final, that we've got Cape Cod Commission comments from, and that we're working through now. I personally don't see the harm in simultaneously doing the official public comment with what we're doing now. I mean, we're already taking in public comment again, based on the June 2024 draft, which was based on-
The comments.
Very comprehensive public comments. I mean, it was based on surveys, it was based on workshops, it was based on multiple outreach, public outreach sessions. So, I mean, I almost feel like it's a good idea to set an end date now for public comment, and we're just incorporating them in real time. I'm, you know?
Okay.
It's a thought that I, you know, I'm, I'm sharing with the Board to discuss. I'm not, you know?
Well, what date did you have in mind?
I, I, I don't. I want the Board to, you know?
Well, give us, I mean, you're as involved as anybody in this project.
Why don't we, why don't we put it out for public comment for the full month of January, whatever we have?
Okay.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Yep.
Do we have to make a motion?
Do we?
You have to advertise it.
Make a motion that we put the LCP out for public comment from January 1 through January 31st.
Can I, can I interject? Because technically, it's, it's out for public comment now. Like, we've got it up on the webpage.
We continue-
But you need to make a-
An end date.
You have to put it in the newspaper. You have to make it, like, a public notice, a legal notice. You have to, you have to-
I don't think it has to, it, I don't think it requires legal notice. There's nothing in the-
No, it doesn't require it?
Yeah.
I'm recommending that we do that, so that we can say we have a 30-day public comment period, and notice goes to the South Clark. You know the deal. It goes in the newspaper, it goes on our website.
Sure, no worries. No worries.
Motion to continue-
My, my only thing is, and sorry to interrupt, Karen. My only thing is, I want to be able to communicate this message to the public clearly, who's already informally been informed that public comment is open. It's up on our webpage. We're already, we've already received comments from the public. We had this session today that was for public comment. So, how can we express that clearly?
We can just say there's an end date-
Public comment shall continue.
From January 31st.
You've had public comment from here. We'd like to collect your input by this date.
What were you going to say, Mary?
Yeah, you just put a public notice that the LCP can be viewed in here, at this, at this location. You can pick up a copy at the town, or you could view a copy at the Town Planning Department, and then public comments are due by January 31st, 2026.
There you go. There's your motion.
Okay.
Can I?
Second.
Second.
No, sorry, go ahead.
It's all right. I wanted to float one other idea out there. If, I think it's like two to three weeks for publication.
Two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, but because it's on a Wednesday, although, actually, if we're doing it at the end of the month, I was just thinking if there's a way to have public, no, you know what, it's okay. I was gonna, I was gonna float out there as an idea, having public comment end mid-January, since we're already, we're not even mid-December yet, but it's okay.
Yeah, I don't care about mid-January. I mean, they've already had it.
It's up to the Board. You want to do the end of January, or do the end of January? You want to do mid-January?
Mid-January, why not? January 15th.
Say the motion again, Mary.
The holidays, Michael, that's why. I've done this many times. I've done this for decades.
Decades.
If you do a public comment, oh, you-
No, that, that's a good point. That's a good point. People are going to complain. They're going to say there was, there was the holidays, there was New Year's.
We had an open public hearing today where one person showed up, and she'd already submitted her comments in writing. Mike, the audience isn't on camera. Nobody was going to say only one person was-
They don't know.
And we'll still be working on it by the end of January. We'll be working on it like, until mid-February.
Is that your motion, Mary?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second.
Any, any objections?
No.
Any discussion? None discussion? Hearing none. We'll take a roll call vote. Dale?
No.
No, or yes?
No, what?
What's the motion?
Motion is-
The motion is that we're going to formally advertise-
In the newspaper.
That the LCP is available public comment with a notice in the newspaper, a notice in the Town, or a notice on our website, where public comment is due by January 31st. And the notice is to also, you know, describe how to submit comments, right? With that email.
We got it, yeah. End date, end date of 31st for the public comment.
All information.
With proper advertising.
Now, how are you voting, Dale?
All vote.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 And that'd be yes.
So, Madam Chair?
And we do. Did we pass?
We passed.
The motion passed.
All right, let's move on now.
Okay, it's only 10 of 8.
And I'm Scott McVay.
Okay, we, we got a district local technical assistance funding letter. And I think it's really great. It's from Christie Senatori, you know, the Executive Director of the Cape Cod Commission.
So, that, that, may I comment on that?
Yes, you may. I just want to ask you one question here. This funding, let me just say, it's $192,000 and change. It's available for the state for planning ahead for housing, planning ahead for growth, housing choice initiative, or accessing federal and state funding opportunities. There are four, four categories you can get money for. Go ahead.
If you had a grant writer-
Thank you.
Yeah.
If we had a grant writer, I wouldn't have to write the letter.
Which category would you go for?
Thank you for asking. I had requested for this to be on the agenda, because I would like to apply for funding to do a feasibility study for the lot that's near Town Hall for an affordable housing project. It's actually multiple parcels that, you know, total plus or minus 11 acres. One is, one's address is Zero Meeting House Road, and the other address is technically Zero Great Neck Road North, even though it does not actually about Great Neck Road entrance, the entranceway would need to be on the Zero Meeting House Road parcel. I'd like to take a look at a study, and I'd like to potentially have that study look at. Two options, you know, one would be 100% affordable with 100% ownership model, you know? And then the other would be potentially a multifamily model. Obviously, the point of the feasibility study would be to recommend one or the other. And this, for a little bit more background and context, this funding is state funding that was received from the county. The $192,000, the county is now, when I say the county, I mean the Cape Cod Commission. The Cape Cod Commission is now receiving applications from various towns for specific projects and for specific purposes. I think that this project and purpose is specific enough, and I think a feasibility study would be in the neighborhood of $50,000 to $75,000. For this Board's additional information, we could potentially fund it ourselves, you know, as a town, but I think if the money's out there and it's earmarked for a purpose that this aligns with, it's at least worth it to apply for it and save the taxpayers some money. I, so, I asked to put it on the agenda because I'm requesting that the Board vote, and I am specifically requesting a unanimous vote to support the application. And then that way, when I put in the application, I can say that on December 3rd, 2025, the Planning Board for the Town of Mashpee unanimously voted to support the application. If we don't have a unanimous vote, I'd ask for no vote.
I'll file a motion for the Planning Department, Town Planner, to apply for a feasibility study for a parcel, look, a 11-acre parcel on Zero Meeting House Road, zero, bound by Zero Great Neck Road, for 100% affordable housing.
From a Cape Cod Commission?
From the Cape Cod Commission, from, from the-
For an affordable housing project.
District Local Technical Assistance Program.
Or mixed income, right, Brian?
Yeah, we can just say for an affordable housing project.
For affordable housing project.
Yep, and that we recommend this application be approved.
Yep.
So be it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Who seconded it?
Dale.
Dale seconded it.
Okay, thank you, Dale.
Okay, so that's great. I mean, $192,000 isn't that much money if we're looking to take 75- I mean, $192,000 isn't that much money if we're looking to take 75 of it. You have a lot of towns looking to do feasibility studies, I'm guessing. So you probably better get that application in yesterday.
I'm sure a lot will be tapping it for feasibility. Well, let's do the 15th, and I imagine they're going to look at all applications.
I mean, will many of them be entirely affordable housing? The applications?
Some maybe.
That's a qualification that might be of interest to them.
Yeah, some maybe, so.
Okay. Chair report, no chair report, is my understanding?
Oh, I do have a chair, a chair's report.
You do have.
I sent the, yeah, I sent the LCP chapter on cultural heritage and preservation to Abba Costello and Richard Disorger to look at. That was one of the chapters we were going to share. And I sent it to them, letting them know we were going to share the responsibility of that. So expect detailed comments from Abba Costello soon.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes.
Sounded like Abba and Costello there for a minute.
Abba and Costello.
Town Planner Report.
That would be funny, though, if Abba's middle name was Ann. So, yeah, real quick, Osprey Court, the conservation restriction has officially gone to the state, and I got a confirmation email from Mark Robinson of the Compact, so that's exciting news. You know, it's a, it's a long, long play. It can take up to a year, but at least the ball is rolling. Regarding the Affordable Housing Committee and the Affordable Housing Trust, I've been working with the chair, as I mentioned at the last meeting, to put together effectively an educational program in the form of a speaker series for the AHC. And I'm pleased to say that that's shaping up. I don't want to disclose too many details until the schedule is finalized and we have all of our marketing materials put together. But I can say that on the weekends, we will have Barrett Consulting start off the speaker series on a general 40, or affordable housing primer for the AHC. And I've already gotten confirmation from some county officials that they'll be participating as well as some local organizations in affordable housing. And on the tail end, the, the final speaker in the series will be Habitat for Humanity. So, exciting news.
Other miscellaneous items?
None, none to report.
Just update. They put a foundation, Osprey Court, the first foundation in.
Yep.
And then Kenny Miles's property, no lines, they haven't put no striping in, no lines, no signs yet.
Yep.
So I don't know when he's going to get to that.
Yeah, we should ping Kenny, we should ping Kenny about that. I mean, I don't know if it's a temperature thing. I mean, it's not like paving, yeah. The, but that does remind me, the other thing I wanted to say is, Island Pickle has gotten its temporary, yeah, it's temporary CO. So the main facility is open, and some of the golf simulators are in the main facility. There's a back extension that's still under construction, so that's closed off. And there's the side extension that's for private rentals that's still under construction, so that's closed off. But the main facility is up and running, the courts, people are playing there on the courts. Apparently, he's averaging 220 people a day.
Wow.
Yeah. And the, the bar and kitchen are open. The executive chef, I, I got to take a peek in the, in the back of the kitchen, and the executive chef was hard at work, cooking up a storm. And the juice bar is open as well, and it's, I mean, it's beautiful. There's no, no other way to describe it.
What kind of food are they serving?
Well, I'd imagine it's island-themed. I bet you you could get a good Hawaiian burger, but I didn't, I didn't have the opportunity to take a look at the menu.
How is a Hawaiian burger?
It's got a slice of pineapple on it.
Oh, Jesus.
And a slice of ham.
Like the pilot pizza.
But it's beautiful. I would encourage people to check it out, especially if you like pickleball, but even if you just want to see a new bar slash restaurant in town, he did an immaculate job and has fantastic taste.
Board member committee reports. Cape Cod Commission.
Yeah, I actually had my first meeting. I didn't vote on anything aside from went to adjourn, but they were going over the draft regional policy plan. So they had, they were the technical bulletins for each, each section. So the pertinent Cape Cod Commission employee who was responsible for each section was, they gave us an overview and took questions from members. It was, it was a quick meeting, a short meeting, so that's my update. They just, we're going, we're going similar to what we're doing here, section by section, going through review.
Okay. Charter review.
The charter review met early this week, and they voted to finalize their final report and to basically cease activity unless, for some reason, we have to activate something for the election. So that final report will be our report in the annual report to town meeting.
Okay. Community preservation?
No meeting.
Design review, no meeting. Plan review?
No meeting.
Environmental oversight committee?
No meeting.
Historic district committee?
No meeting.
Commission, no meeting.
I, I got some other new business, I like to bring it up. But like Michael said, last meeting, too bad, we couldn't trade at Joe's, transfer it to another spot in the town.
Right.
The town owns some land up there, the, the health center, I think it's lot number nine.
Is it industrial?
Yeah, but we could change that, but I'd like to see the.
Well, no, you can, you can do a supermarket in industrial, actually. I did look into that.
But I like to.
When he finishes his thought, I'll break it down.
I like to see the town give them an incentive to, to move their, their store to that lot because it's a nice flat lot.
Where is it exactly?
Right across the street from, you know, that health center.
Yes, that's a trade lot, right there.
Yeah, the trade lot. But the town, town should give them like a carrot, so they can move there. They wouldn't have to change much of their plans, and it'd probably be cheaper because it's a nice flat lot, and it'd be, and it'd take the traffic, I mean, still be traffic, but it'd take it away from Deer Cross and, and that whole little section there.
Brian, isn't that the lot that's, the, the title is in dispute?
There's a lot that was, I believe, or potentially still is held by the EDIC. I think that's the 108 commercial, the 108 commercial lot, that's, there may be, there may be clouded title there. I haven't looked into it in great detail. This is just what I've heard as scuttlebutt, so.
Mary, where was that, where was that lot?
So, EDIC, I don't think owns it. They were just researching it for commercial use.
Yeah.
And they, they couldn't find, now, that was years ago. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dennis, but they, they thought it would be because of that, because they couldn't find a business interested in it. They said it would be better for affordable housing. It does have cloudy title, and it's, it's probably going to need some repeats. It's my opinion, I'm not a lawyer, but I think it's going to need some repeat votes at town meeting to fix that. But it's a beautiful lot, I like Dennis's idea, but I don't know, I, I, I hope that it comes to fruition. I really like that idea.
Because there's a lot of people that want this store.
We do want this store.
Even at, up at Deer Cross, and I do a lot of work up there.
Yeah.
There are three people said they would love that store even there, because they could just walk to it, and they made me promise I wouldn't tell their names.
Yeah.
Because most of the people up there don't want it, and I can't blame them, you know?
Well, let me float out two comments real quick. The quicker being the, the first category of comments, because I don't, I don't want to engage in too much board deliberation on something that's on a continued public hearing. But that's that, I know Trader Joe's does like to have a lot of traffic near where they put things. Whenever you look at a Trader Joe's market, they're in high-traffic areas. If that area is still high-traffic, then that's a potential solution. I, I myself thought that that project would be an easy approval if it were in the industrial pro, you know, if it were on Evergreen Circle next to Island Pickle, it would be a super easy approval. But I'm not sure that that matches Trader Joe's model. And that leads to the second category of comments that I'll make, which I'll just cut off specifically talking about any project and just talk about our zoning code. And there is an interesting provision in our zoning code for the light industrial overlay district, and I believe various commercial zones, which is what would allow it to apply to an industrial zone. There is our provision E12, which if you have, I think it's an anticipated less than 1,200 trips per acre, you can have a retail business there, and I think a supermarket could potentially fall underneath that. Their Trader Joe's traffic study, while I defer to our traffic experts who are going to peer review the traffic study, anticipates 95 trips total for all 3.8 acres. I, I personally think that that's likely a low estimate, but either way, if you're on, either way, it is well below the 1,200 trips, I think, I believe it is. Oh, no, excuse me, it's 300 trips per acre for a total of 1,200 trips. So there are, there are other ways to get it into other zones, is the point. I think there was initially concern expressed that the only way to get it into other zones would be, you know, get a specialty grocery store or in general, into other zones would be through the provisions that they're coming under now, and that, that would be blocked, you know? Or, excuse me, would be through a, a town meeting vote because of the provisions that they're coming under now. Does that make sense? Sorry, I jumbled my sentence a little there at the end.
Not really.
Garbled, but we'll take it for granted.
Thanks, Mike.
I did look at that traffic thing per acre, that's why I was.
Mike, tell me what you really. Sorry.
Well, I looked into that a little bit, Brian. I, I wrote something, and I'll send it to you, that it's only for a secondary use. I can't tell you my sights right now, but it's only for a secondary use. It could be like for a little, you know, sideline business, like a little, you know, snack thing for the people who work in there, but not a full-body retail. That's the way I read it.
Well, no, that's not for E12. E12 is definitely under the primary use.
I'm talking about that area, you're talking about it Evergreen.
Right.
The part that's industrial 1 and C 3.
Yeah, which is the light overlay district.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Well, we have a lot more to talk about with Trader Joe's and.
Sure.
A lot of that coming up.
Technically, we're just talking about the code.
Yeah, well, okay, we don't want to talk about it, but.
I just brought that up to make me think when you were saying like.
I, I can't think of a project that, since I've been around here, that's come, come about, that there's more excitement about a business coming here. Because I've never met anybody who didn't love Trader Joe's. So we have to deal with that and all the other problems, starting December 17th.
And very quickly ending right now.
Okay, and the last thing I want to mention to you is, in the correspondence, I see that there's a DRI referral of Verizon Wireless Mashpee 3, going over to the Cape Cod Commission. No. Brian sent it over 11-5, and it was received by the Cape Cod Commission on November 12th. So there's seven days there that nobody looked at it. It just got stamped, received November 12th. I'm just saying that just, just stamping it took five, seven days.
Yeah, I agree with you, yeah. Hey, Brian, on, on Red Brick Road, where the cell tower is, they cleaned out another lot in front of that.
Yeah.
What, what is that, you know?
Yeah, so that's a project that was approved by the town, because that's town-owned land long before our tree preservation bylaw, and it was approved to create space for DNR, the town's Department of Natural Resources, for things like boat storage, et cetera. So we did get a few phone calls in the department about that weeks ago, when the tree clearing was actually happening.
Yeah.
And we looked into it.